Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the, uh, to this council meeting. Um, uh, Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Yes, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council meeting notice dated March 11th, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements.
Thank you, and roll call, please.
Ms. Allen.
Here.
Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. Naidoo.
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Barton.
Present.
President Fox.
Here. Okay, um, moving on, if everyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance. I believe we, we haven't, yes, there's a flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
United States.
The United States of America, and to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now on to, um, the, uh, the, um, notices regarding closed sessions and hearings and comments.
A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. This meeting is also streaming live through YouTube. To view this meeting via YouTube, please visit the city's website at cityofsummit.org and click on the YouTube icon at the top of the homepage. While this council meeting is being broadcast live and members of the governing body are participating remotely, steps have been put in place to accommodate public input during this meeting through public notice dated March 11th, 2021, which provided information for those wishing to participate during public comment periods at this council meeting. The City Clerk's Office also provided through public notice instructions on how the public could submit a question or comment via email or regular first-class mail in advance of the meeting. Public comment will be permitted at specific times as outlined in the agenda. Please refrain from commenting until solicited by the council president. For those members of the public who wish to make a comment during a designated comment period, please use the raise hand feature and you will be called upon by the council president. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. And lastly, we ask that all participants remain on mute unless called upon to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and now on to approval of minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the regular and closed session meeting minutes of March 2nd and the special meeting minutes of March 8th?
Don't move.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Moving on to reports, um, Madam Mayor, would you like to give your report, please?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Very short tonight. On Saturday, March 27th, the Department of Community Programs is hosting a virtual Easter egg hunt for children and families. At the end of the hunt, there will be an opportunity to take socially-distanced photos with the Easter Bunny. Information on how to participate is available at summitcommunityprograms.com. Uh, next, the Summit Police Department is looking to hire several more crossing guards. If you are looking for a meaningful part-time job with lots of fresh air, helping Summit's youngest citizens to safely reach school, please go to cityofsummit.org and fill out an application. Excuse me, and then lastly, I just want to let you know, we had a, an information and registration center, um, event at the community center on Sunday from 4:00 to 7:00 for people to get more information about the, uh, the COVID vaccine and also to get some assistance in helping to register at the various sites to, to get alerts about when appointments are available. Uh, it was staffed with volunteers, um, some of whom spoke Spanish, Mandarin, um, and of course, English. And I would say there was a steady stream of people coming in, not a, not a whole bunch, but you know, decent amount of people, and they were all got help with, um, registering to get alerts about the vaccine. So, we're hoping we can continue to assist the residents in any way possible to get vaccinated. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and now on to Michael Rogers for the city administrators' report.
Thank you, Council President, good evening, everyone. Uh, I just want to briefly speak on the American Rescue Plan Act that was signed into law last week by the president. And, um, I'm sure there's a lot of information that's been reported on thus far. Uh, I just want to speak to one provision of interest, which is the state and local aid. $350 billion, uh, has been allocated to help states, counties, uh, cities and tribal governments cover increased expenditures, replenish lost revenue, and mitigate economic harm from the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, these funds will be distributed by the U.S. Treasury, uh, in two tranches, uh, with 50% delivered no later than 60 days from the date of the enactment of the law, and the remainder delivered no earlier than one year later. Uh, states will have to distribute these funds, um, and specifically to smaller towns, which are, uh, which is defined as, um, any city or any municipality with fewer than 50,000, uh, in population. Uh, we had, it's, uh, stated within the law that they had, the states have to distribute these funds, uh, 30 days of receiving payment from the U.S. Treasury. Uh, so what does this mean in terms of just dollars? Uh, right now, what our understanding, there's 130.2 billion that have been allocated for local governments in the entire country, uh, and 19.5 billion of that is for municipalities with fewer than 50,000 in population. Uh, and our understanding that's what's coming into the state of New Jersey, uh, 1.74 billion of that, 19.5, uh, or I should say, 130.2 billion, 1.7 billion will be divided among the, uh, 565 municipalities in the state of New Jersey. And then, uh, there'll be, uh, I guess of that amount, 92 million will be directly distributed to, uh, Union County municipalities, and for the best of our knowledge, at this moment, it looks like we will, the city permit will at least receive 2.15 million, uh, of our allocation. It could be more, we're still trying, we're still awaiting, uh, more clarity on what will actually come to the city. Uh, but best of our knowledge, it's 2.15 million, uh, and then we'll receive 50% of that this year and 50% next year. And, uh, that certainly will, uh, help our 2021 budget, uh, which we are, um, waiting on this, uh, this guidance from U.S. Treasury as well as the state of New Jersey. Hopefully, within the next week, we will get, um, get that guidance, and that will help us finalize the budget, which we, uh, are slated right now to, um, I will be presenting on that, uh, probably be the second meeting in April, that's our, our current schedule. So, that is, um, what I have in that, uh, on that topic, and then just one last, uh, item, uh, beginning on or about, uh, April 1st, uh, JCP&amp;L will begin work to increase the efficiency and capacity of transmission line circuits along Summit Avenue. Uh, Summit Avenue will remain open to vehicle traffic, but on-street parking will be prohibited on Summit Avenue between Euclid Ave and Springfield Ave during project work. Uh, the project is expected to be completed in approximately one week, weather permitting. And that is all I have for this evening, Council President, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and now for the Council President's report, I just have two brief items, um, and to follow up to what, uh, the mayor spoke about with the vaccine information session. There, um, also is an effort by the Silver Summit Committee to assist, uh, senior citizens who need help registering for vaccines, and you can reach the Silver Summit and S.H.I.E.L.D. volunteers by calling 908-605-0014, or emailing silversummitnj@gmail.com. Um, another resource for information on COVID-19 vaccine safety and distribution is, um, a webinar that was, um, done by the Westfield Regional Health Department, and that it was, um, it was held last week, and it's now available to view on the City of Summit YouTube channel. So that's it for reports for tonight, and we're now moving on to presentations. So tonight, we have a present, we are presenting, um, a ceremonial award recognizing the volunteers of the transfer station task force that are retiring as the task force was disbanded in that, during the second meeting in February. So, um, we have a couple, I see we have a couple of the volunteers are listed in the attendees list, and there may be some watching from home on TV, I don't know, but I'll read the names of the volunteers. So as far as council members, they were not all, you know, there are more of us on here because we rotated in and out, but I'll, I'll read all the names and then I'll turn it over to Council Member Naidoo to talk about sort of how things wrapped up since he was one of the liaisons for this past year. So, we, um, I see we have, um, Elaine Anderson present, and she was the liaison from the Community Programs Advisory Board. Steve Bowman, our former council member who's now in Texas. Trish Casslin, who's a community member at large. I was one of the members, the council members, the first, uh, year of the, the first two years, actually, of the task force. Rob Friedrich, who was a community member at large. Matthew Gould, and then Stephanie Gould as common council members. Jeff Hankinson, uh, who was liaison from the Environmental Commission. Christopher Harrison, a community member at large. Jack Hellings, a community member at large. Rick Matias, the Community Services Department Representative. David Naidoo, council liaison. Mark Ozarowski, Community Programs Department Representative. Karen Rehoffer, who I see is in the audience, um, and she's the Recycling Advisory Committee Liaison. Erin Schrager, the Community Services Department Representative, and then Adam Zucker, who was community at large and also served very ably as the Chair of this committee. And, um, this committee did a lot of work in looking at what was a very, very complex issue and, um, and, uh, just issued a report that I think will be posted on the city's website, uh, soon. But I thank all of you for, for volunteering your time and for working through all these issues with us, and I'm going to turn it over to David to sort of do the wrap-up.
Thank you, Council President. So, uh, just as background, for, for those who weren't familiar, back in 2018, we formed this committee in response to the fact that, uh, there were a number of members of the community who wanted to see whether there was some recreational uses that could be used. At the transfer station property, um, in conjunction with continuing the transfer station operations, and that, this was discussed in part also during our master plan process. And so we formed this committee in order to have stakeholders or people who are interested, uh, in different aspects of using the transfer station property, um, to sit around a table and try to figure out what was doable and what was not doable. And I join Council President in thanking the hours that volunteers spent, as the mayor repeatedly tells, uh, speaks about, you know, this city is run by volunteers, really, and this is one aspect of it where people, uh, came together, tried to see what common ground they could reach. But one of the interesting aspects, of course, is that, uh, things happen that one is unaware of, and one of the issues that came up during the process was the fact that there may be, uh, habitat of endangered species in, uh, the transfer station property area. And as a result, that really limited the options that became available to use that property, uh, because of the fact that you couldn't disturb, uh, the property in the way that, say, recreational ball field or something would, would require it to be done. And so as a result, um, the, the, uh, the transfer station task force, uh, came up with a set of recommendations that is consistent with continuing to use the transfer station operations, which many of us use, I know in the city and, and really think is one of the, you know, key things here that we have. And in addition to that, there is the opportunities to do some more trail work, maybe a boat ramp launch, a dog park, uh, some fencing, some other issues. That's now up to now council and the respective council committees to consider as to what is doable, what's not doable, what's feasible. Everybody should recognize that the city, uh, does not own this land, it leases the land from the county, and therefore, there's a relationship with the county that requires approval for different options and, um, and what is doable and not doable within that context. So, we will take this report, we thank the folks who did it, they did exactly what we asked of them, which is to, to kind of narrow the scope of what is doable and not doable for us to look at. Now council has it, and the council committees will look at it to see what is implementable and what's not implementable, and, and, and moving there. But again, I join the Council President in thanking these folks for, for it, and a shout-out to Elaine and Karen, who I see are in the attendees list, but I don't see anyone else, but, uh, thank you to all of them, uh, that participated, thank you.
Thank you, um, yeah, Council Member Naidoo. Um, so we're now going to move on to the public comment period, and, um, at this point in the meeting, members of the public will have the, an opportunity to comment on any matter that is not on the agenda tonight. And I would ask you, when you, when I recognize, raise your hand, and when I recognize you, I would ask you to state your name and your address, and to limit your comments to three minutes. If you have a written statement, I, um, please send it to the clerk at our, lickatis@cityofsummit.org. And, um, so we'll move on, I will start with the first comment. Karen Rehoffer, go ahead.
Hello, Council President, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hello.
Hello.
Karen Rehoffer, Summit resident at 34 Parkview Terrace and Chair of the Recycling Advisory Committee, and, uh, now former task force member. On Saturday, April 17th, Clean Ocean Action will hold its semi-annual beach sweeps, and I encourage residents to participate in this. Beach sweeps will take place at over 60 locations along our shoreline from Sandy Hook to Cape May, and basically volunteers collect garbage and recycling from our beaches. The event runs from 9:00 to 12:30, rain or shine, though you can stay for as little or as long as you wish. Volunteers log the items they've collected on data cards, and Clean Ocean Action ultimately uses that information to identify sources of pollution and to monitor trends. The information has also been used to help pass legislation aimed at reducing waste entering our oceans, restricting plastic straws, and restricting smoking on beaches. Online registration is required in advance at cleanoceanaction.org. Now, when I first participated in a beach sweep, I arrived at an ostensibly clean beach and wondered what I was doing there. But once I started sifting through the sand and looked more closely, I found some straws, some bottle caps, cigarette butts, but mostly, I found small pieces of plastic buried in the sand. That year, our small group found hundreds of small pieces of plastic. So yes, I hope everyone listening recycles right, keeping recycling clean and dry, only putting plastics numbered 1, 2, and 5 in your bin, and keeping plastic bags out of your recycling. But I also hope you consider attending the beach sweeps. You may find yourself sitting on one of our beaches, holding dozens of tiny pieces of plastic in your hand. You may then have a still moment when the magnitude of this problem reveals itself to you, and that would be more impactful than me asking you to reduce your plastic use or to recycle right. That moment might be the impetus for you to make some changes in your behavior and in your home. It might change your perspective about legislation aimed at reducing pollution, and it likely will be an experience you will always remember, as it was for me. Members of the Recycling Advisory Committee have signed up for the Asbury Park Convention Center location, and while you can join us there, you can sign up for any one of the sites. It's a meaningful outing for families, friends, and children, and I hope you can join us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and I hope that, um, that folks will, at home, will sign up for this, it's, I've heard great things about the project, so, thank you so much, Ms. Rehoffer.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do I have any other comments from members of the public? Okay, um, go ahead.
Hi, I'm not, I haven't seen the agenda, but I had a comment on leaf blowers.
Um, that's on the agenda, it's being introduced this evening, so, we're going to hold all comments on leaf blowers until the hearing on, um, on April 6th, so, um, and, and we'll, we'll have a public hearing and everyone will have an opportunity to be heard then, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from members of the public?
Council President, if, if I may, I just want the public to understand, the, the leaf blower ordinance, the pilot ordinance this evening, this is just introduction, there's actually requirement under the law that at the adoption, which would be the April 6th meeting, there's a public hearing, and that would be the, the best time for people to comment on the leaf blower ordinance. So if people are waiting to, to do that, the April 6th meeting would be the more appropriate time for them to do it, and that's why we're holding the comments, so we have it for the record for the actual hearing of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jacoby. Are there any other comments from members of the public not on leaf blowers? Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands up, so, um, I'm going to close the public comment period, and we will move on to, um, to our ordinance for hearing. Madam Clerk, could you read, um, Capitol Projects and Community Services ordinance, please?
Yes, ordinance number 21-3229, an ordinance of the City of Summit in the County of Union, New Jersey, adopting new stormwater management regulations pursuant to NJAC 7:8, and repealing and replacing Section 26-1 Stormwater Management of Chapter 26, Stormwater Management Regulations of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council Member Little, would you like to introduce this ordinance?
Thank you, um, Council President. So this, um, ordinance, as, um, we discussed last meeting, pertains to the state mandated stormwater management rules for major developments within, um, the City of Summit. And these, um, um, ordinances were recently amended in New Jersey, state stormwater management rules, which went into effect in 2020, and also, um, those new rules require all municipalities to revise their specific ordinances to match with the state ordinances. So that's what we are doing tonight. The new regulations will require and allow the use of green infrastructure to minimize the natural cycle of water, capture, filter, absorb, and reuse them, the water, um, in these major development plans. I will also note that when Summit passed their new DRO, we, um, passed similar, um, or provisions that pertain to minor developments, as well as these new, um, developments which are, um, required for us to pass that pertain to major developments. So with this combined, um, with the approval, if it's approved tonight, we would now have green infrastructure requirements and possibilities for both minor and major developments within the city, which is exciting. So I would ask that we open, um, this for hearing.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Uh, actually, you're opening the hearing.
We're opening the hearing, right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, are there any comments from members of council? Okay, any comments from members of the public? Okay, uh, coming back to council, uh, there are no comments. All right, um, so, um, then we need a roll call, Madam Clerk, correct?
Actually, Council President, uh, you should close the hearing and then...
Yes, close the hearing and then, right, okay, so the hearing is closed, and, um, we'll move on to a roll call, please.
Uh, if I may, read the ordinance one more time, and then we'll do...
Well, that's for the, isn't that for the, I'm sorry, you read it again for final consideration, okay, got it.
Yes.
Yes.
We haven't done one for a while.
No, we haven't, I'm rusty.
Okay, ordinance number 21-3229, an ordinance of the City of Summit in the County of Union, New Jersey, adopting new stormwater management regulations pursuant to NJAC 7:8, and repealing and replacing Section 26-1 Stormwater Management of Chapter 26, Stormwater Management Regulations of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and Council Member Little, would you like to...
Thank you, Council President, as we just had the hearing on this matter, um, I would ask that the council approve, um, this ordinance.
I second that.
Okay, um, Madam Clerk, um, could, uh, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Hairston. Ms. Hairston, we'll come back to Ms. Hairston as she's frozen. Uh, Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Naidoo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Uh, I do not see Ms. Hairston on our screen.
Did she drop into the attendee, is she logging back in?
Uh, let me check.
I don't see her yet.
I don't see her either. Um, Mr. Jacoby, do you have any recommendation?
You have sufficient votes to pass it, so you, it's passed.
Motion carries, okay.
If Ms. Hairston logs back on, you can just ask her, um, you know, if she wanted to vote in support of it, and if she does, we can go at that for the record.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're moving on now to, um, to ordinances for introduction, and our first one is a finance ordinance. Madam Clerk, could you please read that ordinance?
Okay. Uh, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Okay, um, Council Member Barton?
Thank you, Council President, uh, this ordinance for introduction is ID number 7712. This ordinance allows for an increase in appropriations over, uh, the appropriation limits, and it also establishes a cap bank. So, let me be clear, this is a routine ordinance, it is done every year, it does not mean we will exceed the cap, as a matter of fact, we will not. Uh, also, this ordinance allows us, uh, to bank remaining appropriations, uh, under the cap for potential use in future budget years. Again, the intention is not to do that. The hearing for this ordinance will take place at the council meeting on April 6th. I move to introduce this ordinance.
I second that.
Okay, um, Madam Clerk, do we, could we get a roll call, please?
Yes, uh, Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Hairston is, um...
Still gone.
Not on here yet. Uh, Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Naidoo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Fox?
Yes.
So the motion carries, and, um, moving on to Capitol Projects and Community Services, um, 7754, Madam Clerk, could you please read that ordinance for introduction?
Yes, an ordinance amending Chapter 3, Police Regulations, Sections 3-8, Noise Restrictions, Subsection 3-8.1, Noise Prohibitions to Provide for a Pilot Program to Ban the Use of Gas-Powered Leaf Blowers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and welcome back, uh, Council Member Hairston. We just voted on the, um, ordinance for, um, the, uh, the final hearing on the ordinance, just trying to get it back here, uh, the stormwater ordinance, would you like to register your vote on that?
I would to, uh, vote for it, I apologize, I guess my internet just went down and wouldn't let me get back on, so...
Okay, it happens, and we also voted, um, on the ordinance for introduction in finance, um, which, to exceed the, to establish a cap bank, would you like to register your vote on that?
I absolutely vote in favor of that, yes.
Okay, so we, so now Council Member Little is going to introduce, uh, the Capitol Projects ordinance for introduction, so, we're back on track.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um, this is an ordinance to, um, establish a, um, pilot program that would have a limited, um, time ban on the use of gas-powered leaf blowers in the City of Summit. Since there's been a lot of public interest on this ordinance, with Council President's permission, I'm going to go into slightly more detail in the introductions ordinance than I would normally. Um, as, um, Attorney Jacoby mentioned, this is how the process works, is that during this meeting, we are going to introduce the ordinance, I'm going to explain what the ordinance is about, the council will vote on whether to introduce the ordinance, but there, we won't have comments from council or from the public at this time, it's just to introduce the ordinance. At the April 6th, um, meeting, we will have a hearing, um, we had a very abbreviated one on the stormwater management, but at that time, we would take comments from council, we would take comments from the public, we will have comments from council again, and then there will be a vote on the ordinance, so that's how this is going to work. Um, I did also want to explain a little bit about the background of this, again, since there's been so much interest. Um, this, um, issue has been one that has been raised by, by the public... This issue has been one that has been raised by the public at numerous times, the times that I've been on council. One of the first things that the council has done to address the issue of blowers is that the city actually switched our own Department of Public Works over to battery-powered and electric gas leaf blowers early in 2020, and they have been using them successfully. When the pandemic started, we started to hear much more public comment and much, many more requests to address the issues of poison and environmental impacts of gas-powered leaf blowers. We received dozens of requests in the spring and summer through the fall, and in response, we formed an ad hoc committee to look at this issue. That was comprised of two residents, two local landscape companies, myself and Councilmember Naidoo, and as well as Aaron Schrager, who's the acting head of community services. In that committee, we discussed the pros and cons of many different ways to address this, limiting days, limiting hours, doing a trial ban, how extensive to make the ban. We talked to elected officials from other municipalities who have put these bans in place. Members of the committee also watched a number of webinars and did research, and one of our committee members also agreed to be part of a regional consortium of municipalities that are looking at this issue. So there's a great deal of thought that went into this. As a result of all this input, the committee is recommending that we do a limited ban for the months of June, July, and August on leaf blowers in the city, and then evaluate the impact of that and see whether and how and if we would want to go forward with a more extensive ban at some point in time. We have received a lot of requests to look at this issue, so that is why we are moving this measured approach to evaluating whether this is something the city should, you know, go into. And I am going to be introducing this ordinance for introduction, that we would have a ban on the use of gas-powered leaf blowers for the period of June 1st through August 31st of this year, and I ask that council approve the introduction of this ordinance.
And in seconding, with your permission, Council President, and as Councilwoman Little said, there is a lot of interest that we've all seen in social media, as well as in email correspondence with us. We want to explain, or at least make sure that people understand that not only was this a thoughtful process, but we took into account in talking with the landscapers what their concerns were, what their concerns were with what other communities were doing, and how to avoid the issues that they were dealing with other communities. That is why it's specifically a pilot program in order to make sure that it is not detrimentally affecting them. That is why it's in the summertime in order, because they themselves recognize and have told us that the impact would be minimal during this period of time, while the benefit to the community would be greater because of the chances that people and children would be using the outdoor area. Among the concerns that were investigated and looked at, and including not only in our committee, but also in the Environmental Commission that looked at this issue and gave us recommendations and their thoughts about it, was the issue dealing with how much pollutants get let into the air, not only from the equipment, but also because of the power of the equipment in blowing pesticides and pollens and toxins into the air, causing people who have respiratory issues, including children, an impact on their ability to play outside. It is amongst those things, including noise, including the impact of the change in work schedules that people are having, that we took an approach that we thought was a middle ground to trying out and seeing how this would work out in our community, not mimicking necessarily what others did in other communities, and also trying to be fair to the landscapers. One of the biggest issues the landscapers had was with regard to equity concerning how this would be applied overall, and they wanted to make sure that they weren't being singled out, and that's why we structured it the way that we did in order to apply to everyone. We recognize that there is hardship involved in this. We are not immune to the fact that this changes the behavior for some individuals, especially those who have bought individually their own gas-powered lawn blowers, and they have an expectation that they could use it. We understand that. We also understand that as, as a community, we have to have balancing between different interests. We recognize that this may be an inconvenience to some, but you are benefiting others who have issues that they have been impacted with. You have, and folks have to recognize that that is what we keep on doing here. We keep on trying to balance between different interests that are there. We're not going to get it perfect. This is why it's a pilot program. We're going to try it out, and we're going to see. But this is not a Trojan horse to try to get to, we're going to ban it during the fall or the spring or so forth. This is really just to see whether it works this summer, and maybe it will work, or we'll have issues, and then we'll see. And among the other issues, I want to say that we considered and we've talked about, is the issue of trying to help out those businesses that may be adversely impacted. We'll have to see if that can be possible, we don't know. But those are things that we'll look into as this program is rolled up and see how effective or ineffective it will be, and then we'll take it from there. And with that, I second it.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Naidoo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Yes, the motion carries, and so the hearing will be at our next meeting on April 6th. So moving on, we have one more Capitol Projects and Community Services ordinance for introduction. Madam Clerk, could you please read the ordinance title?
Yes, number 7757, an ordinance to amend the code, Appendix A, Schedule of Fees Contained the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Madam President. This is an ordinance to amend the code for the schedule fees in the City of Summit for construction permits. So we have a Construction Division trust account, which has, for a number of factors, been in decline over the last few years. Some of that is declined activity because of the pandemic, and also because of the transition between Selgin and Bristol-Meyer Squibb, there was some construction activity on their campus that had been ongoing, which was halted due to the, to the transfer of ownership on that property. Because of that, the permit revenues and expenses were draining the existing surplus, and we are looking to stabilize that, and in order to, we're going to have to do, we are proposing to do an increase in the construction fee permits. I will note that we have not done an increase in our fees since 2011, and I would ask that the council approve the introduction of this ordinance.
I second it.
Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Naidoo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Yes, the motion carries. So moving on, we've got resolutions.
Council President?
Yes.
If I may, I realize that I did not advise that there was one public comment that was received on Friday. If I may go back with your permission and read this for the public comment period?
Of course, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
All right. This is from Carrie Fallon of 92 Tulip Street, and she writes that the track at Memorial Field needs maintenance immediately. The natural surface has lost its filling, making it extremely uneven with numerous divots, deep bike and car tread marks, and embedded footprints. Additionally, water is not being absorbed. These holes and irregularities in the surface could cause serious injuries to those walking, running on the surface. Filler material needs to be added, and the surface needs to be leveled, or a synthetic all-weather surface track should be considered.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to call on Community Programs Director Mark Ozarowski and ask him to respond to that, as he's been looking into this, the conditions of this location. Go ahead, Mr. Ozarowski.
Thank you, Council President. So just a little bit of history on this. Last year, right after Thanksgiving, beginning of December, myself and our parks formed and actually walked the track, and during our walk, we did notice some low spots, we did notice some areas that needed some more cinder, some stone dust. But we decided to hold off until the spring. The plan for Public Works is, once the weather breaks and we get done our routine maintenance to get everything in shape for the spring season, they're going to come in, they're going to put some, bring in some loads of stone dust, they're going to grade it, they're going to raise the low areas, and they're going to make the entire track much more level. So it's on, it's on their radar, they plan on doing that, like I said, at some point in the spring. As far as the footprints and the bicycle marks, we see that every single year at this time. People walk on the track, people ride their bikes when it's, when it's wet, we get the freeze, and then they stay there until basically the spring when things warm up. The Public Works crew right now is in the, they're actively in the process of getting all of our facilities ready for April 1st, when all the spring sports are starting. And what they will do is, when they're over at Memorial Field, they're going to walk the track and just make sure some of these bicycle marks and footprints are raked out and smoothed out, so there's no issue. So that, that's the plan, and like I said, it will be addressed.
Thank you, thank you for the information on that. So I guess with that, we'll close the comment period again.
Okay.
And we'll move on to resolutions. So we have five finance resolutions. Councilmember Vartan, would you like to do the first one, please?
First thing, thank you, Council President. So this is Resolution number 7733. This resolution authorizes emergency temporarion, emergency temporary appropriations in the current fund budget, which is the temporary operating budget for 2021, until the 2021 municipal operating budget is finalized. So just worth mentioning for a moment, the temporary budget can only be 26.25% of the prior year's budget. So this is not just simply 26.25% across the board, because of the timing of when bills are due, it has to be planned very carefully. So the word "emergency" makes it seem like a surprise, or makes it seem like poor planning. That is not the case at all, this is just a legal term used in order, in order to continue normal operations until we have a municipal budget, which will be very well planned and considered. So I move to adopt this resolution.
I second that.
Okay, are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? So one reason that we're seeing this is that we're also going to be introducing the budget later in the year than we might in previous years, because we're still waiting to find out about the Rescue Act monies. And so I just wanted to add that as well. So because we are probably not going to be introducing the budget until April, and usually we're sort of underway in that process, it does change what's been budgeted. So with that, are there any other comments? Councilmember Naidoo?
Thank you, Council President. Actually, it made me think, when Administrator Rogers was talking about the American Rescue Act and the tranches of money that we would be getting, I just wanted to ask a question, I don't know if he already knows, based upon his review or the guidance is out there for it, but since we're going to be getting half of the money in the next couple of months, is there any restrictions on our ability to use that money? Do you know?
The answer is yes. I mean, it's fairly broad in language that I've seen, and it's, they're going to be looking at, the way we have to approach it, my understanding, what I've read, and what has been communicated by various organizations, is that you're looking back to 2000, at the end of 2019, so you're really looking over the last year to see, mainly it's a revenue loss funding. I mean, I think for us, certainly the beneficiary cares, the Act funded reimbursement last year for costs, so I think that was more or less covered last year. That ended toward the end of last year, at least the funding was told, not to say that we may not get reimbursed for some of what we all applied for in December, which was a little over $140,000, $150,000. But this is really more a revenue loss opportunity for us through this funding, and the restrictions are, my understanding is that you can go out to 2024 with COVID-related costs and revenue. So even though the funding is only going to be over a year period, there seems that you can apply for this, or apply these funds for up to, for years. So some municipalities may, and states may hold on to this and spread it out over a few years. There really are not many restrictions, but to answer your question, Councilman Naidoo, we're waiting, US Treasury guidance that will be presented to the state, will then provide their own guidance, and more importantly, how it, how we can use these funds in our budget, and how we have to insert a revenue source. And we just are kind of in a holding pattern at this moment, until we do receive the formal communication of it.
Okay, thanks, Michael.
Okay, so, so are there any other comments or questions from members of council? Okay, hearing none, I guess we're ready for a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Naidoo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries, so moving on to Finance Number Two, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution number 7765. This resolution authorizes emergency temporary appropriations to the sewer utility. This adds $477,000 for wastewater treatment that needs to be paid to the joint meeting. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, oh, nope, roll call.
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
And President Fox?
Yes, the motion carries. Moving on to Finance Number Three, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is 7756. It authorizes renewal of the Summit City Cooperative Pricing System. 10 years ago, in 2011, the Summit City Cooperative Pricing System was created in cooperation with Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, Florham Park, Milburn, and New Providence, with the City of Summit as the lead agency. The purpose of this cooperative pricing system is to coordinate with procurement of services to obtain better pricing. The system has achieved that purpose, with the city and other members saving annual costs, especially on the annual micro-resurfacing program. The cooperative pricing system is only approved for five years at a time. This resolution is requesting authorization from the State of New Jersey's Division of Local Government Services for five more years. As the lead agency, Summit must make this request, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to ask, how does this cooperative agreement compare its pricing with the county services that are available? Is there any relationship between those?
I think that's a question for Director Schrager, if he can answer that one.
Yes, I can through you, Council President. Essentially, we're creating our own co-op, that we do go out and get the cooperative pricing for the municipalities included, but when we receive those bids, this specific micropave application is not available through many co-ops, but we do always compare it with the state pricing, and we generally are always cheaper than them, so we proceed with ours.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Schrager. Are there any other comments or questions from members of council? Okay. Okay, uh, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, moving on to uh, Finance Number Four, um, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is number seven, seven, three, five. This resolution authorizes the submission of the 2021 Union County Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Grant. This is a matching grant, and the city is applying to improve the accessibility and storage of the city's vital records. The total cost of the project is 12,000, and this is absolutely necessary because the Clerk's Office spends an inordinate amount of time in the, on Open Public Record Act or Oprah requests. This project will digitize some of the documents and organize the others, and this uh, will save time, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And uh, for the, uh, we have one more Finance Resolution. It's actually, um, it's number seven, seven, two, zero. It's actually, for those of you following at home, it's listed as Capital Projects Number Seven, but it's going to be introduced by Finance, so I'll turn that over to you, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, this is resolution number seven, seven, two, zero. Uh, this resolution authorizes the assignment of a contract and amends indemnification language for the 2021 Consultant Engineering Services. Um, at the council meeting on December 15th, 2020, council adopted resolution number three, nine, six, zero, zero, which awarded a one-year contract to Mazer Consulting Incorporated. The company has changed ownership and will now be known as Colliers Engineering and Design Incorporated. This resolution does two things. First, it approves the name change, and second, it slightly changes the language on indemnification. Those changes have been reviewed by both the city solicitor and the risk manager. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're moving on to law and labor. Um, Councilmember Allen, would you like to do the first law and labor resolution, please?
Yes, please. Thank you, Council President. Pursuant to our closed session discussion, I'm introducing resolution number seven, five, nine, nine, authorizing the execution of the memorandum of understanding, which outlines the roles and responsibilities between the City of Summit and Friends of Summit Public Art. The Summit Public Art previously accepted donations through a fiscal sponsorship agreement with the Summit Area Public Foundation, and the two parties dissolved that agreement, and the Friends of Summit Public Art, an independent 501(c)(3) will now serve to raise funds, accept donations, and support Summit Public, Public Arts mission. I move this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any um, comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, um, okay, if no one has any comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Allen, would you like to do the second law and labor resolution, please?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Pursuant to our closed, our discussion in closed session, I'm introducing resolution number seven, three, six, six, to authorize the extension of sick leave with pay for an employee in parking services. Um, the extension will be through April 14th, 2021, and we wish him a speedy recovery. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, now we're moving on to Capital Projects and Community Services. Councilmember Little, would you like to do the first one, please?
Thank you, Council President. Um, Capital Projects Resolution Number One is number seven, six, zero, nine, and this is to award bid for the Spring 2020 Citywide Tree Planting. Um, the city received a number of bids, and the um, low bidder was disqualified, so the bid went to um, SJC Lawn Care, um, which um, luckily was the same company that recently did the fall planting, which was very successful. So we are awarding the bid to SJC Lawn Care um, in the amount of 52,025 to um, do our fall, our spring planting for our trees. Um, we also are receiving $10,000 from the 2020 Union County Grant for this planting, um, which will go towards that cost. So I ask that we award this contract um, and approve this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we'll move on to um, uh, Capital Projects Number Two, Councilmember Little.
Capital Projects Resolution Two is number seven, three, seven, seven, and this is to authorize the contract purchase of the transfer station compost building shell replacement in the amount of 269,078. Um, this is um, a project that we've been putting off for quite some time. It's to replace the shell of the compost building, which is in the lower part of the transfer station. The building is um, currently um, has minimal insulation and has um, whole, it's, it's worn through in several places, so it's no longer weatherproof. And really, um, it's at the very end of its life and probably well beyond its life. So this project absolutely needs to be done. It was approved in a previous capital budget um, authorization, and I ask that we approve this um, resolution for the transfer station shell replacement.
And I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, um, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So um, moving on to Capital Projects, um, Number Three. Can three and four be bundled?
I was just going to ask for your permission to bundle number three and four, with your permission, Council President.
Uh, not with me, um.
Yes.
Solicitor Jacoby, is that, that's acceptable, right?
We're going to assume it is, because we'll go for it unless he tells us.
He's, he just nodded, yes, good. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, good.
Totally acceptable.
Okay, go ahead.
Capital Projects, um, Resolution Three is number seven, six, one, one, which is to authorize purchase of a Mack single axle dump truck um, in the amount of 103,555,000. Um, and moving on, Capital Projects Resolution Number Four. Sorry, let me scroll down. It's so, um, number seven, six, seven, seven, which is to authorize purchase of the dump body plow kit and spreader system that go with that dump truck through the New Jersey Cooperative Pricing System in the amount of 61,033. Um, again, the, these, um, so these, the dump truck and its accessories were authorized under previous capital budget. Um, they are well beyond their um, expected lifespan. These trucks are essential for use in the city Department of Public Works. They're used for snow removal, storm cleanup, and road improvement projects. Um, and I ask that council approve this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion's carry. Um, so moving on to Capital Projects Number Five, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. Um, Capital Projects Resolution Number Five is number seven, seven, one, six, and this is to authorize submission of a grant application for the Union County 2021 Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Engineering Project. Um, this is a grant that we um, apply for every year through Union County. This um, grant application needs to be up for a project that is shovel-ready and ready to go and, and that will be completed during this year, so before the, the end of the year in 2021. So we are going to be applying for the Butler Parkway Road Improvement Project, um, and I ask that this, um, that we approve the submission of the grant to Union County for this project.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Naidoo?
Thank you, Council President. I, I just want to inform all of council and, of course, the community. You know, a couple of weeks ago, we approved a contract for uh, a grant writer, and part of that discussion that we had at that time was the fact that we wanted to make sure the grant writer was getting in touch with different communities to talk about initiatives and ideas, and I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that uh, in the upcoming one of the meetings in March, uh, at the CAP Committee, we're going to be talking to the grant writer and going through some of the ideas and thoughts that we've heard from different uh, boards and commissions as to issues that they would like us, uh, so I'm sure other committees will have similar, similar discussions, but I wanted to make sure that people knew we were following up on what we had said we were going to do with regard to that.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Naidoo. Does anyone else have any comments on this resolution? Uh, Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. Um, just wanted to ask the question I think I've asked before. Uh, does this road project also include sidewalks?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
There's, there's a number of improvements that are, as, as going on as a part of this Butler Road Parkway um, project. I think we discussed some of them when we approved the project itself, but there's going to be um, sidewalks, there's some road narrowing to um, to um, do some traffic calming in that area as well as a pedestrian crossing. Is there, is there anything else involved in that project that I'm missing, Director Schrager?
No, that covers it.
Okay, great.
Okay. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, um, so any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, moving on to Capital Projects Number Six. Um, Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. Um, cap, thank you. Capital Projects Number Six is number seven, seven, zero, eight. Um, and this is to authorize the submission of a grant application to the New Jersey American Water Company um, for their environmental grant program. Um, this is um, being done through the City of Summit's Environmental Commission, and they are applying to, for this grant, um, to, if, and the project is going to be to install rain gardens at the um, Summit Community Center. So um, this is a great project. Um, it would involve reforestation, native grass plantings on the slopes and meadows adjacent to the building, and um, also include educational and outreach programs. So they're applying for a grant in the amount of $10,000, and um, we wish them all the luck and wish to, and I ask that we approve the um, authorization for them to apply for this grant.
I second that.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, um, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and now we're jumping down to Capital Projects Number Eight, Councilmember Little.
And we skipped number seven as your call, because we gave that one to Finance.
Right.
So I am on to Capital Projects Number Eight, which is number seven, seven, six, zero. This is to authorize Cub Scout PAC number three, six, C, their community project, which is a community cleanup at Martins Brook along Butler Parkway and the Village Green. So um, you know, through the city's environmental commission, the Cub Scouts have requested permission to do this community cleanup. Um, they are going to do, the Village Green is a backup location if it's needed, if they complete the other two quickly, but um, we would, we like to endorse these activities, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second it.
Any comments from members of council? Councilmember Naidoo?
Well, uh, since we're talking about cleanup, I think everyone should know April 10th is Earth Day Cleanup, uh, that's hosted by the environmental commissions. There'll be different locations uh, to do that. Then, of course, as Karen Rehoffer said, you could go on April 17th for ocean cleanup. Uh, it's, looking around town, I personally think there is a fair amount of litter that's around our city right now, and maybe just because it's the post-snow, uh, but, and, and, but, you know, you see a lot of stuff, and I think it is really incumbent on all of us to take care of where we live, and so I encourage everyone to help clean up our own town, um, because this is where we live, and this is the, you know, you know, we want to have a clean environment for all of us. So I encourage folks to join us in Earth Day Cleanup activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Naidoo. Um, just to clarify, this cleanup um, at Martins Brook is actually going to be this, I believe this coming weekend, and it is not open to the public, it's the Cub Scouts that are going to be doing that. So, um, any um, comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, uh, hearing none. Um, thank you to the Cub Scouts for, for volunteering to do this important work, and um, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Keep moving on to Capital Projects Number Nine, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. Um, this is resolution number seven, seven, three, seven, which is to authorize professional service agreement for the Broad Street West Redevelopment Financial Advisor Services. Um, as we've been discussing frequently at our council meetings, council's moving forward the Broad Street West Redevelopment Project, things have been moving along, and at this point in the process, the city is um, looking to hire a financial advisor to um, to provide consulting services and assist us in analyzing the fiscal benefits and impacts of the whole process. So we reviewed um, five different proposals, and we came to the conclusion that Nassau Capital Advisors of Princeton was best suited to provide this service after reviewing their qualifications, meeting with the principals, and um, looking at their familiarity with work and this type of work in other jurisdictions. Um, at this time, I would ask that we um, approve this resolution for these, this financial services agreement with Nassau Capital Advisors.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Um, I would like to add that this, it, this, um, the expenses of this under this contract will be reimbursed by the escrow account, um, the Redevelopers escrow account, so this will not be coming out. This will not be ultimately paid by this, uh, the city, it will be paid by the escrow account. So, uh, just to clarify that, um.
That is correct, I meant, and I meant to say that, so thank you, Council President. That, that is absolutely correct.
Right, okay. Uh, any other comments from any members of council? Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. Um, last few council meetings, um, we've done a couple of things related to Broad Street West. To the extent that we can, can we just share uh, the rough timeframe that we're expecting for when we can start including the public on Broad Street West conversations?
I believe that um, we will be, we're looking at probably the end of April, or I think it'll, or maybe the beginning of May, I think it, it also probably depends on the budget um, introduction. Does that sound about right, Michael?
Uh, yes, Council President. Uh, I would say that, and we, it's something we'll have to discuss, whether um, it's at a regular council meeting or we have a separate um, virtual meeting uh, on that subject matter of, um, separate from a, from our regular business. So, uh, yes, I think the end of April is, is, is our target timeframe.
Okay, thank you, um, Councilmember Naidoo.
Uh, I think with regard to timing, obviously, one of the key things will be, and, and I don't disagree necessarily with what proposed timing is, is this, in fact, hiring this consultant? Because key to the entire project is that we need to know the financials. We need to understand what it will have as a financial impact for the city and how that, how much it is and what it is, and uh, are we comfortable with it? And those discussions still need to be had, because the, we're going to go now in the step of having, uh, because we've gotten far enough in the process with the developers to know kind of what it is that they want to build. Now we're at the step, we can evaluate it financially and figure that out. And I would ask us that we take the time that is necessary to get it right, to make sure we get our financials right about it. Uh, and so if it, this is an approximation of when, I would suggest that we have a time when the public, but I think when the public hears it, I'm sure the public will want to know what the financial implications are of what we're doing as part of the overall package. Uh, I, if I was sitting in the public, I would want to know, what does this actually mean dollars and cents? Because this is partly not only a design decision, not only with the character of the city, but it's also a financial business decision.
Thank you, Councilmember Naidoo. Any other comments from members of council? Uh, Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I want to thank uh, Council Naidoo for uh, making that statement. I want to thank Council Naidoo for making that statement, because as you say, the members of public, also me as councilperson, really want to understand this step with the financial advisor. And so helping to know that timeframe and really going back over the whole picture. I know this has been a step-by-step process that just got totally interrupted by COVID, and it'll just be a great reminder for all of us, the awesomeness of this project and how much it's going to do for the city. And we need to know every single dollar and how the redevelopers are going to be involved in this. So I appreciate the care that Councilmember Little and Naidoo and Michael Rogers took in finding this advisor, this financial advisor. And I am really looking forward to hearing the details on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Councilmember Little.
I just wanted to add that not only is the hiring of a financial advisor really important at this process, but the members of council who sit on the steering committee and Michael Rogers met with the principal of the firm, and we really grilled him, asked him a lot of detailed questions and got very comfortable. And I thought his advice and his demeanor and his obvious experience and expertise in talking with us was really impressive. So I think that not only having a financial advisor is really important at this process, but having this particular financial advisor in Nassau Capital is going to be really beneficial to us. So we did, we were able to meet and talk with him and really get into some of the details of the project, and he was very impressive.
Thank you, Councilmember Little, and I definitely agree with that statement as well, as I was part of the discussions, and I thought he added a lot of value and gave us a lot of really useful information that will be very useful going forward. Any other? Councilmember Hairston, is that hand up from four? Or, yeah? Oh, you have another comment? No, it's down. Okay. Any other comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're at our last Capital Projects Resolution. Councilmember Little.
Thank you. The last Capital Projects Resolution is number 7763, and this is one I'm very happy to bring to the council, because it's to appoint a zoning board member. And pursuant to our closed session, I would like to propose that Jamie Levine, who's a local Summit resident and a friend of mine, and someone I admire a great deal, be appointed to the zoning board. Jamie is a doctor who works locally. She has two young children, and she's been very involved in the community and the schools. And I know her, I've known her personally for quite a long time, and she is well-spoken, she's thoughtful, she is engaged, and I think she'll be a tremendous addition to the zoning board. And I'm really pleased that she's willing to put forward the time and volunteer her time and skills to making Summit a better place to be and serving on this board. So I would like to enthusiastically ask the council for approval of this resolution to, for Jamie to join the zoning board.
And I enthusiastically second it.
Thank you both. I think it's important to remember, these are volunteer positions, and a lot of the volunteer positions in our city government are very time-consuming, zoning board being one of those. It's twice-a-month meetings, very, often very contentious issues, and we rely on, you know, the skill and judgment of our residents to make these very important decisions. And I'm very pleased that Jamie will be joining the zoning board. Are there any other comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're moving on to community programs and parking services. Councilmember O'Sullivan, would you like to do the first resolution, please?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 7687, to amend the contract, parking paid by phone services, Park Mobile LLC, convenience fee paid by end user effective May 1st, 2021. Since 2013, the City of Summit has given our parking customers the option of paying for parking through the Park Mobile app. It is a nice convenience and a safe way to pay for parking directly from your smartphone. As everyone is aware, parking revenues are down substantially because of the COVID pandemic. What you might not be aware of is that Park Mobile charges a transaction fee to use their app. Prior to 2020, parking revenues were large enough for the city to absorb the convenience fee associated with each Park Mobile transaction. This is no longer the case, which is why, beginning on May 1st, 2021, the city is amending the remainder of our contract with Park Mobile to state that the customer will now pay the convenience fee for every Park Mobile transaction. This convenience fee will not exceed 25 cents per transaction. We briefly discussed raising parking rates, but chose this path instead. If you choose to pay for parking by using one of the kiosks in our parking lots or on the street, you will not pay a transaction fee. There will be ample communication in the press and on social media outlets from the city to inform the public further. I move we adopt this resolution.
I second. Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, I had a question about the Park Mobile wallet. How does that work? Councilmember O'Sullivan, would you like to answer, or should we have Director McNanny do this?
I think Rita knows the details greater than you, so.
Okay, Director McNanny, could you please explain what the, there was mention of the wallet, and I found it a little confusing. I think you have to unmute.
Okay, there I am.
There you are.
Through you, Council President.
Of course.
The wallet account, people can set up, and it's basically a pre-deposit amount. It's still a count of like $25, and then each transaction deducts. And then you can, it's almost like an EZ Pass account.
Right.
And when we first had the contract with Park Mobile, it was a way for, if, through the wallet account, the city would actually pay less of a transaction fee. But through the last, since 2013, what we've learned from our customers is, there's a lot of, at least 38 to 40 other towns in New Jersey that use Park Mobile as well for paying for parking. So the customers would say, well, why would I set up a wallet account that strictly could be used in Summit when I could just use a regular account and use it in multiple towns? So they really didn't think that was very convenient for them. But some people who strictly maybe park in Summit utilize it. I did find out from Park Mobile that's only 8% of all of our users. The difference with that is the transaction fee goes to 15 cents instead of 25, and then a 3% of the fee, transaction fee, a processing fee. So it's just a way, it was a way for the city to reduce our convenience fee payments, but Park Mobile doesn't think that there's going to be that much of a switch. But it's still available to the customer if they want to do it for 15 cents as opposed to 25, and then a 3% credit card processing fee on top of that. One's a convenience fee, the other one is a credit card processing fee.
Credit card processing fee would be 3% of what you put in the wallet. So let's say I put $25 in the wallet.
Right.
3% of $25, and then 15 cents for each transaction fee.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
No problem.
Councilmember Hairston.
Council President Fox, I just wanted to let you know another time when it's beneficial for residents, if you have an employer who allows you to contribute toward it, having that separate account makes it beneficial for you. So that's another advantage, and I know you're tracking it, Director McNanny, but I wanted you to know that it was a good option for commuters.
Yes. And also, if I may, Council President, just more information on the Park Mobile. The majority, since 2019, the majority of our transactions are for five hours. Second highest is for 90 minutes. Third highest is 60 minutes. So again, just with transition through our public information that we get out, we will let people know that if you're a little hesitant, so you don't have that two transaction fees, maybe pay for an extra half hour, you know, all at one time, to save that 25 cents per transaction fee.
So in other words, what you're saying is, if you extend the time, that's a second transaction?
That's correct. It's each transaction is 25 cents. So that's why through, I'll work with Amy Carnes, and we'll get that message out that even for a half hour, this way they have the time, and they won't get charged that extra fee.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to community programs and parking services, number two. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 7715, to authorize a scaled reduction for the 2021 fee with the Summit Family Aquatic Center food concession, 2017 through 2021. The City of Summit is entering the last year of a five-year contract with S.A. Food Associates LLC to operate the food concession at the Summit Family Aquatic Center. Last year, we reduced the rate that S.A. Food Associates paid to the city because of the pandemic restrictions. This year, S.A. Food Associates is concerned about restrictions that would limit their ability to operate fully, although Director Ozaraski and his team feel that we will have a normal season. In reality, we just don't know. That's why we have agreed to a scaled reduction of the concession fee based on total sales. At the end of each day, the closing manager will log the total sales, so we have an accurate accounting at the end of the season. If the total season sales are above $90,000, S.A. Food Associates will pay the full amount of $21,000 to the city. But if the amount in sales is anything less, then the rent payments will be reduced on a sliding scale. We believe this is a fair pricing model to determine the appropriate rental fee for the upcoming season. I move we adopt this resolution.
I second. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then moving on to the last community programs and parking services resolution. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 7750, to amend the membership. Silver Summit Senior Citizens Advisory Committee had organization and appoint as new member. As discussed in our closed session, the Summit Foundation has expressed interest in joining Silver Summit as a full committee member, and we enthusiastically welcome them to Silver Summit, and we think they're going to be a valuable addition to our committee. And I move we adopt this resolution.
I second. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Well, we thank the Summit Foundation for volunteering to join this committee, and I think this will be a really good partnership. And I know that there's been a lot of interest from the Summit Foundation in funding projects supporting our seniors here in Summit. So I think this is a great opportunity for all of us to make Summit a more senior-friendly community. So I thank everyone for this. And with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and now we're moving on to the consent agenda. Generally, we take the agenda as a whole and vote on it unless anyone has any items that they would like to discuss separately, either from the council or the public. Is there anyone who would like to pull anything out of the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now moving on to councilmembers' comments or new business. Does anyone have any comments? Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to take a quick opportunity to lift up the outstanding achievement of one of our young residents. Brady O'Shea is 13 years old. The Sunday before last, he completed the four-by-four-by-48 challenge, meaning he ran four miles every four hours for 48 hours. He did this to raise thousands of dollars for the Goriab Children's Hospital. Dozens of neighbors in my old neighborhood, police, fire, and EMS were there to greet Brady at the finish line. I was thrilled to be there as a member of the squad. I want to say three things. First is, that level of athleticism is basically unfathomable to me, so congratulations. Second, one of my crewmates, who is on the squad but not from Summit, remarks to me after that he couldn't imagine something like that happening in his town. And I think it's just nice for us to pause and reflect on that for a moment. And then the third is to directly say thank you to Brady. He saw an opportunity to be helpful to other people. He set a ridiculously ambitious goal, and he did it. So he's an inspiration to me, and I think to many others as well. So thank you, and that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Any other comments from members of council? Councilmember Naidoo.
Thank you, Council President. Two separate things. One is, on the American Rescue Act, as folks know, the mayor, Councilwoman Hairston, and I sit on the Board of School estimate, and just wanted to point out that in addition to the funds that the municipality will receive, there is also funds that the schools in Summit will receive. They, just as the municipalities have certain restrictions on their ability, how they'll be able to use those funds, but in particular, for those folks who did not see the Board of School estimate meeting, this was discussed and raised. And among the things that, once those funds are available, we think we could use those monies for an HVAC system at the high school as well as for air conditioning at the middle school, two projects that are both necessary. And so I want to give a shout out also to our Congressman Malinowski, who voted in favor of the American Rescue Act in getting us there. And secondly, I have been many times very critical about social media and still remain so with regard to as a means for having dialogue between people, because one doesn't have an opportunity to really have a conversation through social media. But social media can be very useful in mobilizing folks. And there are posts that folks will see on the Summit's social media, dealing with certain members of our community who are dealing with health challenges. And I encourage folks to go and help support our fellow residents who are dealing with those health challenges, and help them out by putting, by getting more information out there about what they're dealing with and to the appropriate folks, and hopefully making better decisions with regard to that. I'll leave it at that. Folks can figure out what it is, and I think a lot of folks know what I'm talking about, but I don't want to go too much into detail. But if you can help, please do. Thanks.
Any other comments from members of council? Okay, hearing none. I guess it's time for adjournment. Does anyone have, would anyone like to make the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
I can.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Aye.